Good evening and happy holidays. This is the Call Board Meeting of the Richland School Board of Commissioners, which is a Board Information Session for Tuesday, November 30th, 2021. We are located at Hayward Career Center Technology Center at 3560 Lynn Haven Drive, Columbia South Carolina 29204. We'd like to read a statement, which is pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act for you. The public will be provided access to the live stream of the meeting via the district's website, www.richlandone.org. We do have an agenda in front of us. Start time is now 6:02. We call this meeting to order. We have Item 3.01, which is Agenda Adoption, and then Items 4, which is Officer Human Resources, 4.01, HR Processes Presented by Dr. Long. I would like to entertain a motion to accept the agenda on 3.01.
Move for approval.
Second.
The move by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Clyburn. Question or discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll now cast our vote. You want it verbally or electronically? What's the outcome of the vote?
It is a five yays, two not present.
All right, it's five yays, zero nays. Be advised that two commissioners are absent at this time. All right, we're now going to Item 4.01, HR Processes Presented by Dr. Long.
Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners, and Dr. Over the years, we've had several different systems for hiring employees in the district. We've used, you all might have remember hearing about Munis. We used Munis right before we did Frontline, and that system was a touch-and-go system. It was up one day, down the next day, even to the point that there were times that we would have to print hard copies, had principals to email us their recommendation packets, and then we would have to print hard copies and put them in folders. Then we would take it from HR person to HR person to try to get the process done. Well, Frontline replaced all of that. It is a web-based system that is pretty reliable, quite frankly speaking. It takes us through the steps. The hiring manager can see where we are in the process. So you all might have heard that the process is slow. We do have some choke points. There are points where we go outside of Richland School District One, and that we're relying upon someone else to provide us with some information. So our workflow is held up when it goes some other places. And if things are working like they should be, then we'll get that back in a timely fashion that we can keep our processes moving. Some of you have even asked, as a matter of fact, some of you board members have asked us, have asked me, how long does it take to hire someone? And my response has been, depends. We can talk about from two to three days to two weeks. And that's not really just specific to Richland School District One, I might add. Other districts takes about the same amount of time. I've heard recently that some folks are saying that some of our districts are able to hire somebody in two days. And as a matter of fact, I heard specifically about one or two districts. So I called the HR officer, said, "Tell me what you're doing, that you can get someone hired in two days, and that's nearly impossible for us." And they said, "I don't know where you heard that." I said, "It was taking us about, from a week to two weeks." And one district even said even longer than that, said about a month to hire some people. So the process is the same process, for the most part, throughout all of our districts because we're all using an AppleTrack system. And so Frontline is the one to do it for us. But there again, I have to say to you that we do have a few choke points, and Mr. Kalu will cover those points with you all. He's going to take you through our hiring process so that you'll know what we do and how we do what we do, and what might be a point to slow us down. So if you're hearing folks talking about being hired, you'll have a common language that you understand what they're talking about. You might understand if it's taken a little bit of time for them to get hired, you might understand, okay, this might be in step two, that we're waiting for a background check on them, or we might be waiting for another document or reference from the candidate or something. So you'll understand that he's going to walk you through that process. And if you all have any questions, I encourage you to ask the question while we're at that point so that he can clarify that for you. Mr.
Good evening, Board Chair, Commissioners, and Superintendent. Again, I'm here today to go over the Human Resources Teacher Hiring Process in Frontline. As Dr. Long explained, Frontline is a Human Resources Management System, and it is web-based. For a supervisor who is looking to hire someone, they first must log in online to the AppleTrack system for recruiting and hiring. Once they have logged in, they will begin by creating a form. As you can see from the screen, under Forms, there are different tabs where you can enter in exactly what you're looking to do. For a supervisor, you will be filling out a new form.
If it's possible, how close can you get that screen to the commissioners?
Some of us can't see.
Okay, I think you blew it up. That's better. All right, now is it obstruction to the camera? Okay, let's make sure the camera's not catching the screen, but it's catching the speaker. All right, I think we're good, Dr. Witherspoon, with this screen over here. All right, please continue.
Thank you, sir. Once the hiring supervisor logs into the system and clicks on the Form button, then they can click on Recommendation to Hire and continue with that selected form. This form is a recommendation to hire so that supervisor is looking to select the job position and the employee that they want to recommend for that position. The job position we're going to hire for today is Job ID 5797, which is Certified Teacher. The person that we want to recommend is John Q. Once you've selected the position and the person you'd like to hire, you can select the Next button to enter the recommendation form. Once inside the recommendation form, the principal or hiring manager will select a certified position for teacher. They will select full-time, part-time, or hourly. They will enter the Position Control Number for the position that they're hiring, and then they will enter the Position Location. Then they will enter the Position Title. The Position Title is the same number as the Job ID. So in this box, instead of looking for it, they would just type in 5797. And it'll come up with the title for the position that they're looking for. If the position has someone currently in it, then you would replace that position. If there is not someone currently in the position, then you would make it a new person or a new position. Next, you would give the start date that you would wish for the person to begin. And as the hiring manager, I would like the person to start as early as today, but potentially The hiring manager must also have their interview notes and telephone reference. Once they've completed their interview of the candidate, they upload the interview notes at this point, and they upload the telephone reference from the last teaching supervisor that they've had. If the employee is a new teacher, then they will also call their corresponding student After they've entered that data, they would sign the form and submit it. If a principal or a director does not press Submit Form at this point, this form will not reach Human Resources. It'll stay in the file as a draft. In addition, once they complete Submit Form, the form will ask them if they would want to approve the form. And as I clicked it, it says, "Thank you, you've reached your submission. Your submission has been recorded," excuse me. This also sends an email to the person who started the Job ID to let them know that this Once the hiring manager has completed their requisition, then the job recommendation goes to the HR assistant. And that HR assistant would go inside of their queue and be able to see the next steps. It will also send the HR assistant an email where they can click on the link and go directly to the position or the recommendation. You will see me log back in and refresh to show you each step. The person who is working will not have to do that, but I need to show you that so you can see each step on the screen. Once the HR Director's Assistant receives the recommendation for employment, they will enter the applicant's birth date. They will verify the applicant's social security number. They will complete a background check. The background check can be SLED or SRNI. If the employee has been within the state of South Carolina for the past five years, we do a SLED check. If they have not, we do an SRNI. This is the first time in the HR process where the work goes outside of Richland One. And so we have to send this information to each of those sites to find out if the person is eligible to work in the district. Prior to COVID, an SRNI background check took two to three days. Now after COVID, it can take two to three weeks. And so we've contacted other districts to make sure that that information is succinct across the board, and it is. In addition, we've talked to other companies, and we've had the similar information given to us for new companies. Once they've gotten their background check back, I apologize, in order to complete the background check, the employee has to approve for us to do a background check on them. So if we do an SRNI background check, a link is sent to the employee, and they have to approve it before it will be done. So if they do not approve it, that clock does not start. The HR assistant would then upload the background check, sex offender check, and teaching certificate into the screen. They will also ensure that the applicant has three references, three personal references. If the applicant has at least two personal references, we will move forward and proceed with the hiring process and reach back out to them for that third reference. Then the HR assistant will select the Certified Director, which is myself. They will sign the document digitally, and again, they will have to press Approve to send it to the next step. It will again ask them if they have any notes or any comments before submitting the form. If they don't press Approve and OK, it will not go to the next person in the process. At this point, if anything was missing, if the teacher did not complete these items in a timely manner, or if the principal was missing some information for the hiring process, the notes would show exactly what was missing from that step. And so delays can happen if a teacher, for instance, does not approve their form, or if a principal does not upload their telephone reference or interview notes. Once the HR assistant is completed with their portion, then the form will go to the At that point, the HR Director will check the grade, class, and salary for their applicant. That information, grade step and salary, comes directly from their certification, and it lets us know that we played in how many years, excuse me, their education level, how many years they have taught, and years of experience listed on their certificate, and the starting salary for that position. We also list the number of days that person will work and their contract level. If any other documentation is necessary, the HR Director will attach that documentation here. They will select the Certified HR Generalist, and then they will put in any notes that are necessary. Once they've completed all portions of the recommendation, they will sign themselves and approve the signature to be sent to the next step in the process. As you see, each time I log in, there is a tracker bar for John Q. Teacher in this position, and it shows exactly where he is in the hiring process. You see the hiring manager is in blue, it's been completed. Step two is the HR Director, and it's now moving to the HR... Step two, excuse me, is the Administrative Assistant, and then it moves to the HR Director in step three. If at any point during the process, the person is not approved to move forward, that line will change from green to red, or it will turn to white, and it lets everyone know that there's something wrong with that section of this recommendation to hire. Once the HR Generalist receives the email, letting them know that they have something in their queue, they would log in using that link and use the same continuous form to complete the offer. The first step is a verbal offer where they'll call the employee to see if they are willing to accept the position. If the person accepts the verbal offer, then they are given a contract that they must submit and return. This is another potential choke point in the process because each certified employee has 10 days to sign this contract and return it to District One, and that's the legal mandate for teacher contracts. So when you hear at times that a teacher takes two weeks to start, that two-week period could have just been the time period it took them to sign their contract. That's not including any other choke points. There's then a Board Approval Date, an Orientation Date, which is done weekly, and then the actual start date. This is the earliest date the person can start. They must have their TB test and all documentations completed, including their medical release form, in order for them to start at that time. If they do not have those items completed, we have to wait for them to submit them before they're eligible to work. The Certified Personnel Technician is selected, the Performance Evaluation Coordinator, and then the HR Generalist will sign it, saying that it's been completed, that all information has been checked. They will approve it and send it to the next step in the process. And as you see, when we go to the next step, each category changes. So when it's white, it turns to green again in that tracker, and it lets the next person know where that person is in the process. The final step is the Personnel Technician. At this time, the Personnel Technician will enter the Budget Code and the PSST Upload Date. This is important because the Budget Code is tied to the position, and the PSST Upload Date tells that they have created a spreadsheet of all the documentation that we went over today for this hire and entered it into the Financial Munis system that allows for payroll and hiring to begin. So that spreadsheet will have all the data that we filled out in this continuous form. It will be sent to our payroll program, again, called Munis. The Budget Code is entered, the date that this was completed is entered, and then the Personnel Technician will sign the form stating that it's been completed and that they have checked all the information above. Again, they must select Approve and select OK for it to be completed. Once that is done, the bar for that employee has been completed, so any hiring manager or anyone in the process can look and see that that person has been offered, hired, and onboarded to work in Richland One. Please let me know if you have any questions.
All right. Any questions from any commissioners at this time?
I have a couple of questions. Is that all right? Ms. Harris, go ahead, Ms. Harris.
Robert.
Thanks. You mentioned the SLED check for, if an employee's been in South Carolina for five years, how long does the SLED check take?
SLED checks generally come back immediately. So if the person has been there, usually within 24 hours, we have a response.
Okay. And is there a reason that we can't start the background checks when the principal and teachers identify someone they want to interview?
We have a number of positions and vacancies, and for our background checks, we would have to pay the fee for each individual person that has signed an application for the district.
And how much is that?
It's $15 per employee, per applicant.
Total?
Yes, sir, that's the initial charge.
Okay. And do you all keep data on how much time passes between a contract not being signed and that job being posted publicly, and then, from then, how long it takes for an interview to happen, and then from then, how long it takes for the job to be offered? Is that data somewhere that we could access?
Yes, sir, we do track that data. Of course, that data changes because of the choke points, but we are able to look in the system and see exactly how long each, or how long it takes for us to hire employees.
Do you know how long it takes to post a position once one becomes available?
It's up to the hiring manager to post it, but it can be posted immediately. There's no delay in time in posting a position if the position is approved and the information is correct.
Okay. And do you wait until a contract's not signed or someone resigns before you post a position and begin recruiting and interviewing?
I'm sorry, repeat that question. I want to make sure I heard it correctly.
Do you wait until someone resigns or doesn't return their contract before you post a position and begin recruiting and interviewing for that position?
We do a process called a Form A, where we fill it out prior to a person resigning so that we have the time period to post and fill the position. But again, it's up to the hiring manager to submit that information to HR correctly so that they will be approved and so that budget will approve them to post the position.
And what about the letters of intent? I mean, if you don't get, I mean, we know we're going to have trouble filling spots for next year. So is there any reason we can't start posting positions in January and start to recruit and interview for positions that we believe will be open?
We've already started that process. We had our first virtual career fair last month where we were able to early sign teachers for next school year.
And so can you, well, I'll let Ms. Harris, because this goes outside what you've talked about. I do want to hear from someone about recruitment strategies and some HR success measurements. But just two other quick questions. The international teachers who are here pursuant to the outside vendors, and so they have three years, do you know how many international teachers that we have right now under those contracts?
No, sir. And they actually will have up to five years because they can extend their J-1 visa. We have teachers that are in J-1, H-1B, and who are no longer international in the green card process, so.
So are all the teachers available to extend their contract to five years?
Unless they have worked as a J-1 teacher or have violated one of the rules, yes, sir.
Okay, and the district will sponsor that additional, that extension, no?
If the teacher has been effective, yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I think that it's important that, as a board, we understand the process. You talked about choke points, and that happens a whole lot more than people realize. It's not as cut and dry in HR as people think it is. HR is my baby, so I know what we deal with here. But just a few questions for clarity. The principal's role, because the principal is trained in what they need to do upfront because their role is significant with the interviewing, adding the notes, and apparently they have to make the initial call to the last, the former boss or whatnot before the process even can get started. If they fail to hit, submit, and some other stuff, it doesn't even go anywhere. One of the questions that I have is, once that process starts, the system is set to notify the candidate, because they're not employed yet, where we are in the process. Is that correct?
The candidate is not notified, but everyone that is working with the candidate knows.
So if we've started the process and I'm your candidate, and I reach out to the school and say, "Hey, where are we at in the hiring process?" They can go on the system and see, okay, it's been received by the Administrative Assistant, and it's being processed. At a certain point, there's an email that is sent to the candidate to give the district permission, which is required, to even do the background check, because they can refuse the background check. They refuse the background check, the whole process stops. When they fail to do that, that also prolongs the hiring process, which makes it kind of lengthy. And it's interesting we're talking about this because I was on a call with some other districts, and everybody's having somewhat of the same issue, especially right now in COVID, especially as you expressed about when a person lives in the state, it's easy to get a SLED check. But that other system is a whole nother ballgame because that outsourced company is probably used by a lot of school districts and a lot of other companies, period. There's not a lot of companies that do that. When that process is prolonged at that point, and you hear from a candidate as to where we at in the hiring process, do we go into detail as to, we're waiting on your background check, it's being, did I see everybody nodding yes?
Yes, ma'am.
So you are keeping the candidate informed as to what is going on in the process? Okay. You talked about, and this is another question I had that I found interesting. You talked about when it gets to the district, you have a HR Administrative Assistant that has initial steps. You got a HR Manager that has steps. Then I saw something with a Technician, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
How many HR Administrative Assistants is retrieving applications for us?
Retrieving applications...
Pulling the applications off of Frontline.
For certified and classified, they have one each.
Let's do the side, okay, one?
Yes, ma'am.
We have one retrieving?
One for certified, one for certified, one for classified, I think.
Yes, yes, sir.
So we have one person on both sides that do all that initial stuff y'all just showed us, plugging in those dates and all that other stuff, the codes, all the budget stuff, all of that. Wow. Let me ask another question while we're talking about this. Dr. Long, how big is the HR department? How many people? He had to fix his glasses to answer.
There are 25 of us in the department.
And we have 4,500 employees?
Right.
You got a staff of 25. So you got two people on the front end pulling these applications for us. Okay? And then after the admin does their part, it goes to the HR manager. How many of those do we have?
You mean it goes to the HR director after the assistant?
Well, I think the director, that is correct.
Right.
One?
So I have one director for certified and one director for classified.
Okay. Then when we get to that almost final stage where we're going to plug in all those notes and all that other stuff because we're ready to do the big super hire, that technician, one and one?
The HR generalist, yes, ma'am. The HR generalist.
That's interesting, Dr. Witherspoon. That's a lot. That's a lot. How often do you all have new hires that need to be approved by the board and you're awaiting board meeting dates? How often does that happen that you've got 10 candidates that's ready? Okay? The board needs to approve them, and the board meeting isn't until two weeks out. How often does that happen?
Well, that's not a problem for us for teachers anymore.
Okay.
It was at one point, if you remember, a few years ago, about three or four years ago, you all allowed us to go ahead and hire teachers without board meeting. But that really used to create a problem for us, and that's why you all allowed us to do it a different way. So we don't have to have to wait for a board meeting to hire a teacher.
Okay.
We do for administrators, though.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm going to yield to somebody else right now. I got some other questions, but.
All right, any questions to my right? Commissioner Myers.
Quick question. When it comes down to the hiring process, and there's some new documents that we would like to add, like proof of vaccination, who had the opportunity to add that to the process?
Our HR team is able to upload any additional documents that have been approved into the frontline system once we have that document.
All right, any questions to my left? Commissioner King.
Thank you. I have several questions. Just so that I make sure that I understand frontline. So frontline, we had an overhaul of a HR slash finance, et cetera, system called ERP, and frontline came on the tail end of that. I remember it was an emergency procurement, maybe three years ago. Frontline is, tell me if I'm understanding its basic function. Is it sort of like a, can I put a label of, it's like a common app for employment where, between districts? I mean, a lot of districts use frontline, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, so, so for the districts that use, especially in South Carolina, that use frontline, when people apply, especially teachers, then where we, if it's a common app, we're sort of becoming competition with other districts for the candidates, right?
It is a common app, but they have to go to each specific version of the district app to apply. So for instance, if I have an application with Richland Two, then I can possibly transfer that application to Richland One because it's a common app, but I have to go into Richland One for Richland One to see the data. And I have to sign the Richland One application for Richland One to be able to pull that information.
Is that a functionality that can be changed and made easier so that version one actually kind of streamlines and makes it easier for applicants to apply here?
No, ma'am. We're not able to have access to other districts' personnel information, and other districts can't have access to ours either.
Okay. And then help me understand something. So the process that you explained and walked us through, I mean, this is a process that is a process under normal conditions, right? And all the, checking all the boxes and going step through steps, but we're not under normal conditions anymore. First, we're COVID, and then we're essentially in emergency conditions because we're all fighting over smaller and smaller pool. So my question to you as an HR department, with all the brains, the good brains and experiences that you have, what have you done, especially over the past two years or at least 18 months or 12 months, to streamline the process so that maybe some of those, you know, has to check the box can be put on the back burner or be circumvented, at least so that we can at least get the candidates that we know we're going to get, and then we can take care of the bureaucracy on the backend?
Yes, ma'am. We're definitely, Richland One is definitely a progressive district, and human resources is no different. Every year, we evaluate the process and procedures that we utilize, and we streamline them to make them more efficient for our teachers because our number one goal is to recruit and retain everyone that we can for certified and classified employment.
And I really appreciate that, but what specifically have you done? What's different today than it was 12 months ago so that when somebody's going to apply, let's say for the 2022, 2023 school year, you know, it doesn't look like it looked 12 or 24 months ago? And, you know, you were talking about, you used like a bottleneck or, what was the term that you used?
You said choke. This could be a choke point.
Choke point, yes. So, so are there any choke points that can be removed?
Unfortunately, we've definitely worked hard. I don't know if you remember earlier, I stated that we've contacted other companies about one of the choke points, which was the background check for out-of-state employees. And though we're in COVID, and though this is a trying time, and we're all competing for the same recruiter, recruiting, the recruitment of teachers, the rules and laws haven't changed. In fact, they've become more strenuous. And so we have to make sure that everyone that we hire meets all of the qualifications as a teacher to make sure that we're providing a safe and learning environment for all of our students.
When, when you have, the documents that are required for this district that are required for other districts as well, you're talking about the laws and rules and regulations, those would, would they be in the system for most applicants that are not new teachers and readily available?
No, ma'am. We have to run current background checks, for instance. We have to check their certification currently because that information is updated each July 1st and each November 1st. So a teacher may have a certification that is for a five-year period, and something may happen during that five-year period where they will lose their certification. So we have to go back in and check. An employee may have had some negative infraction that has happened in another state, and so every time we hire a new employee, we have to run a new check. So this information is usually new to each individual that we hire.
Okay, so that would be the same for every district, right? So it wouldn't be?
That is correct. And each district has a time period that they allow that documentation to stay in the district.
Okay. Before I move on to something else, you know, I want to go back to a point that Ms. Harris was bringing up about the, I think, the underlying, I guess, is like maybe too few people. But so in 2016, the district spent about $50,000 for an HR audit by the Tidwell Group, and it must have come back with recommendations. And I think at the time I asked for those recommendations, I don't think they were shared. So what were those recommendations? In 2016, we had definitely less than, less, I mean, we had more teachers and we had more students. So what were those recommendations, and do we need to look at a new audit maybe to see what can be done?
Unfortunately, I was not here in 2016, but what I can say is during the year that I've been here, that we've progressively gotten better and really improved the HR department all around.
Well, that data should be out there, right? I mean, we paid 50 grand to have that done, so I'm assuming that there.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure on that dollar amount. It was something that we looked at administratively, and we'll certainly look at that and provide that information. No problem with that.
Dr. Witherspoon, if you allow me to, this was actually a contract, and it cost right under $50,000 by the Tidwell Group. So if we can do some research, because those are things that the taxpayers have paid, the board, well, didn't approve because it was, happened to be under $50,000, but it's still money that we paid, and I'm sure that that is very relevant to today and.
Yeah. And to your point, I was just saying, on that dollar amount, we'll check, but we'll certainly provide that information.
Right. I mean, the dollar amount is, you know, is what it is, but what's important are those recommendations. What did it find? What did it recommend? Did we implement that? And do we need to revisit? I'll yield for now, Mr. Chair.
I just want to follow up with one of Commissioner Harris' points, and maybe she's going to go a little deeper into that conversation. Those two positions for classified and certified, they not only deal with hiring, but they also deal with all employee issues throughout the district. With that being confirmed, let me ask you another question. A district of our size, how many people are in that position in a district of our size, parallel to us?
I don't currently have that data, but I can say that generally speaking, our HR department is comparable to other districts. I'm not saying that we're the same size, for some districts were smaller and vice versa.
I'm sorry, start over again. What, the first thing you said?
The word comparable. In other words, we're close in size, but we're not the same. Some districts have far more individuals that work in the department of the same size.
Well, so there is no discovery of what another district our size has in those two positions as a number? Is it four for those positions, two, three? You have no idea what that is?
No, sir, just totals.
Okay, all right. You have some more questions?
I had another question, but to your, to your point, not looking at this from a school district standpoint, but from a HR standpoint, I guess, Dr. Long, you can answer this question. The amount of staff that we have, 4,500 employees, what is the ratio? One per 75, something like that?
See, I don't remember clearly, but it's either one to 75 or one to 100 or something like that.
Right. So even with that, with the question that you're asking, Mr. Chair, our numbers are still much lower. I mean, one of the things that is an immediate concern of mine is hearing that there's a one and a one at the beginning, and then there's another one and one at what I consider the critical junctures of the hiring process, retrieving that information because putting that information in those numbers, those numbers are not correct. You've messed up the whole process. You've got to go back and figure out what you've done wrong. It's, you know, and you did an excellent job showing what you do on a daily basis, but it's a little bit more tedious than what you did just now because you get an application and a person didn't give you all that information. See, those are the other choke points that happen, and you've got to run this person down to find out X, Y, Z, or you've sent them an email and said, hey, I need you to give us permission to do your background check because Principal so-and-so really needs this position filled, but you're not getting a response from them because they may be trying to get in another district someplace else, X, Y, Z, all that stuff that you go through. So, you know, that, that's another chokehold is making sure that what you're entering is right because once you start that process, you've got a certain amount of time to do a lot of those steps. And a lot of times, you know, people don't realize that. It's easy to look at HR and say there's a magic wand. There is no magic wand. That's tedious work. And one slip up, that's why when you say one and one, that's, you know, that's really concerning to me. One person doing that first step of the hiring process, waiting on a background check, you got applications constantly coming in. That is a lot for one person. Truth be told, there needs to be a team that handles that piece because it speeds up the hiring process. What makes the hiring process long is when you don't have human capital. A lot of people don't realize that. You know, you can't throw money at everything. Sometimes you got to have a person there that handles certain things. And I know that school districts go through what you call hiring season. We're in hiring season right now. We hire all year long, but we're in major hiring season. But to your point, you've, to the question that Mr. Lomack asked, we're already hiring for next year. When we begin the school year, we're already closing the school year to get ready for the next year. That's how a school district has to function, and that's how we have to think. So it's a little bit more tedious, and when you have an immediate person that decides they're going to quit or got to leave for family reasons, whatever, the bus stops moving because you've got to stick, you've got to stop what you're doing to speak to an immediate need sometimes. You're hiring teachers, but then something happens to a principal, so we've got to go on a massive search or whatnot. It has a lot of choke points, other than the ones that you are mentioning right now. But, you know, like I said, my concerns is the one and one, and then the second one and one. That's a lot. And I think that when we're not able to get information processed in a timely manner, and a lot of times people will say, well, you know, just use somebody out of another department. That's not always the case because when you pull from another department, now that department is slighted. I can promise you right now, your benefits office is wide open with FMLAs because we're in a pandemic. So you can't go, even if you're going cross-train them, you still can't use them because they're handling medical leaves and et cetera. You know I'm telling you the truth. So it's, it's sometimes organized chaos that nobody understands, but you all that have to do it. But, you know, Dr. Witherspoon, you know, those, that one and one is very concerning. It is. And I say that to my colleagues, that that may be a choke point in itself, that your human capital is so small in some of the most critical parts of the hiring process because that background check, like you said, when it's out of state, it takes forever. And the thing about outsourced companies, sometimes they get back to you when you call them wanting to find out what the holdup, they take their time because guess what? You want a five, six, 700 other companies. So if you're upset that we're taking too long, oh, well, that's how they feel. HR is a muddy game sometimes, but at the end of the day, you have to, you know, you got to pick the lesser evil, Mr. Chair. You know, with this company, they do do this, 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 this. If we go with this company, it may take two months. You know, you got them out there, those outliers that a lot of people don't want to go with because their process is even longer. But, you know, I'll yield for my other colleagues, but this is, this is a good discussion because as we hear folk always complaining about the hiring process, it's across the state, it's across the country, and the pandemic is not helping because those places are probably short-staffed. Everybody's short-staffed. One short-staffed leads to another short-staffed. So, you know, when you understand that it's not just you fill out an application, wave the wand, you hired in five minutes, that's not what happens. It's a lot of stuff because those numbers that you're punching in, all of that, when that thing carries over to MUNIS, it links to their pay. And if that's not carried over right, then now you're delaying their check. Now you've got an angry employee that hasn't gotten their check. So you got to go back in, Dr. Long, to figure out where was the mess up? Where's the glitch, as we say? But, Mr. Chair, I'm going to yield and let someone else talk.
Anyone to my left?
I've got some questions.
Let me call it out. I think I seen Commissioner Lomack, Commissioner, excuse me, Lomack. Let Claburn go because she hadn't said anything. Your hand is up, right?
Of course.
Commissioner Lomack, we're going to go to Claburn and Lomack, then King.
Okay. And thank you for that presentation. So I have two questions. I'm going to keep it at two. The point that Commissioner Harris brought up about the one HR assistant in classified, one HR assistant in certified. So they've all made great points about the concern, you know, of there only being one per, one assistant per category. Is there a plan to increase those numbers? To, you know, one more than one?
Yeah, I think they're looking at, sure answer, Commissioner Claburn.
Sure, yeah, I think they're looking at, sure answer, Commissioner Claburn. And this is one of the reasons that I did ask the chair, you know, several weeks back to have this session that we're having. Yes, we do feel the need to look at staffing and look at that for the reasons that were brought up, but also, you know, we often talk about Richland One being somewhat unique in the state, not the largest, not the smallest, but a combination of multiple demographics and so forth. And I say that to say, with it being a teacher's market, they do search around. Many seek us out, but as they apply here, and we even, we'll have the, and it's strategic when we have these hiring fairs, these job fairs, and districts compete who has it first. And then it's kind of like, okay, if we have it on a certain date this year, next year, somebody goes the week before. And so is a lot of that, and I say that to say, you know, the competition is stiff, but teachers, and understandably, they do apply to multiple districts. Some of them do, you know, of course, want to be here, and we want them here, but they do look at other places. And quite frankly, some look at, okay, even within our district, we have schools with certain demographics and so forth, and schools are not, and even in the district, okay, and there have been teacher efficacy studies for the last thirty, forty-plus years that say, well, where can you be, where do you feel as a teacher you could be most effective? In schools that looks like this or schools that looks like this? A lot of times folks say, school looks like this. Now, of course, you get folks that, no, I want to be school. And then you even look at it as a district. You know, we're here in the Midlands, and we often get compared to other districts in the Midlands, whether right or wrong, we get compared, but we're not like a lot of the other districts in the Midlands. So just like the same example of where, what school might you be effective, and we get folks here that say, I want to be here, not there. I want to be in this district, not this district. We'll make an offer, well, I'll hold off, and they'll call and email and all, and, you know, and I'm not saying, you know, but my point is, to multiple points that have been made, with our, we've got to stay in recruitment mode, we've got to stay in retention mode more so than others. So even as Ms. Kahlou, you know, alluded to, and there are HR departments of various size and so forth, some of our HR work and other work gets magnified, which means, yes, there might need to be some additional human capital in human resources to continually take a look at how those things work. So that is something, again, as I talked with the chair about several weeks ago, about having this presentation, that, you know, we've asked the question internally, that, hey, what do we do? Might we need some additional, you know, where are the choke points? Where do things get backlog? You know, if it's the background check, you know, what can be, we've asked similar questions that you all have asked, what can we do? And one good thing about, you know, the system too, is, again, folks that are involved in the process can log in and say, okay, here's where it is in the process. Oh, you know, we're waiting on the background check and those types of things. But might there need to be some additional staffing in that area? Yes, and that is something that I've had Dr. Long and his team to look at and advise accordingly on there. But again, the point here, we wanted you all to see, here's the process, and similar process that we look at. But again, the references have to be checked. The background checks have to be done. Now, do we do, when they do the job fairs, hiring fairs, you know, conditional contracts and, you know, those types of things, yes, but all of those are contingent on, okay, all of these other things checking out, you know, and so forth. And we do, you know, try to move as quickly as we can, but some of these processes, we have to stay in any organization, but you, you know, now more than ever, you've got to stay in that hiring mode and taking care of the folks that we have, and onboarding and all of that at the same time.
All right, Commissioner Claburn, you good?
I have one more question, a second question. So my other question, I know frontline, the software is what it is, and we're probably limited in what we can, you know, change with that, and not suggesting any shortcuts, because I know things have to happen in a certain way when it comes to HR, because you want to make sure you're in compliance. But are there, you said that you all do a, we do an annual review of, you know, how things have been working to try to figure out where improvements can be made. Is there anything that you can say or tell us that, you know, any kind of innovative or creative ideas outside of the, you know, the software? Is there anything that you can tell us, you know, that might improve the situation, improve the process?
Yes, ma'am. We actually do periodic progress monitoring. Just recently, we had additional training with our principals and supervisors and executive team to explain the hiring process, similar to the process that we work with you, to make sure that they have the knowledge of the information. We've added more communication with our employees towards the other questions, and we keep a communication log inside of the frontline system to make sure we're staying in constant contact with each applicant that we have. So that's two of many examples. We have a wonderful supervisor who makes sure that every week that we are looking at the data and that we know exactly how many vacancies we have and what we're doing to make sure that we fill them.
All right, Commissioner Lomenek.
Thank you. So going back to that SRI check, I mean, fifteen bucks seems like a pretty reasonable cost, if it means saving two to three weeks of the process, if you can do that kind of parallel with the interviews, right? I mean, wouldn't that be cost-effective in the long run to go ahead and just pay for those?
I can't answer that question effectively. What I can say is that fifteen dollars is that, again, that base amount, if there are any other items that have to be done, that could soar, and just want to remind you that we have thousands of applicants, whether they are qualified or not, that apply each day, each week, each month to our positions, and that would be an enormous cost if it's approved.
Well, how many of those thousands are applying from out of state that would require an SRI rather than a sled check?
A vast number. We hire many out-of-state employees and out-of-state certificates.
And how much does it cost to lose someone because of that waiting time after the teacher and teachers and principals interviewed them? I mean, do we quantify the cost? Like, you know, I know that we quantify, when we lose a teacher, it costs around, what, eighteen thousand dollars to rehire and start training a new teacher. How much does it cost when we lose a teacher that we've interviewed?
I'm not sure about the cost that costs us when we lose someone, but it is very cost prohibitive every time we lose a teacher that we have working for us.
Well, speaking of retention, Dr. Witherspoon rightly raised this. What methods do we have each year of getting feedback from principals about the HR process and about what we need to be doing as a district to retain the teachers we've got?
We submit surveys to, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead. We want to, Dr. Long is going to talk about that.
Okay.
Toward the end, what we do and.
Gotcha.
And we've got some other things. So that's all I was going to say, yeah, that's coming up.
Okay, I'll save questions for that. I don't want to mess up the order of things here. Mr. Kahlou, I understand there's some concerns about having one person assigned for certified, one person assigned for classified. Are you saying that that is one of the choke points, just having one person for each of those positions, that one of the choke points is within the department there?
I can say that it can be, but I can also say that we have very talented staff, and they work diligently to make sure that we hire everyone that we have that comes through. Would it be easier if we had more people potentially? Of course it would be, but I don't want to shortchange the wonderful employees we have there that are working.
Well, yeah, I mean, somebody can be really good and still be overburdened and not, you know, not be able to do everything in one day. So I'm certainly not faulting the two individuals, but I wanted to ask whether that was one of the choke points that's been identified. I think Dr. Long rightly stated that Richland One's HR department as a whole is comparable in size to other districts. I mean, Richland Two is twenty, Greenville's twenty-nine, Lexington's five is nine, Lexington's one is twenty-one. Could there be any reorganization to provide those two folks help with, so that another person from the department gets assigned that duty with them, especially during the hiring season? You know, the heat of it, I assume, is May, June, July. I mean, I realize it's all year, but after those contracts come back, the summer, I mean, May and June, what, you tell me, what are the two biggest months of the year for hiring?
It's hard for me to answer two of the biggest months, and I apologize for not being able to answer your question. It's literally the entire year. We may have it slowed down for a little bit in the November, December period, but we're hiring for the next school year. So there's really no point where we stop full-on hiring all the time. And just to touch on one of your other points, and just want to make sure it's clear that our staff does complete all the items that they're given in a timely manner. So though, again, it would help to have more people, they are able to complete their tasks.
Okay, so then it's not a choke point, right? I mean, if they're able to do it in a timely way, then it's not a choke point?
It is a choke point, because it's so, the number, the amount of work that they're doing. It could be made faster if there were more people working. So instead of it taking two days, it could take one day.
Okay, so I guess that's a question, is how, you've quantified the SRI check as two to three weeks. Having one person for certified and one person for classified adds how many days to the process? Is it two days or two weeks?
The SRNI is outside of our HR department.
I mean, having one person assigned to certified and one person assigned to classified, how much does that lengthen the process? I assume it's not two to three weeks, right?
I wouldn't have the tangible time for that, the actual time for that.
I don't, I couldn't tell you how much time it adds, because we've not had anything but one person in those positions each time. But the choke point matter, it's not necessarily because there's one person there, but one person is doing that choke point, it's because it goes outside of our organization and it's in somebody else's hands for them to do something with it, even the candidate has to sign, and if they don't sign, then that delays the time on and on. And for the SRNI to be run, that delays the time by two weeks, possibly two weeks or even longer sometimes.
Sure, no, and I totally understand that sometimes we're at the mercy of outside organizations and things like that. I was just trying to get at whether having just one person for classified and one person for certified was adding significant time to the process. And if it's not, then I wouldn't call it a choke point. If it is, then I would, and we need to address that.
Well, it probably is, Mr. Lomenek, again, we've not had any more than one person, but that one person's not the only thing they're having to do. That's the point. There are other things going on in that office that they're having to address. The phone can be ringing at any point with an employee who has a problem. You ask what's our high points, high hiring points. As you said, it's all through the year, but especially during the spring of the year through the summer, all the way through October, November, that when our teachers are off, they're in our office, because they have things going on. So we have to address whatever they have going on. Those office assistants, they have to address that, and they are also serving as the secretaries for these directors, that whatever information they need done, they have to do that as well in addition to processing applications.
Well, I guess all I'm saying is, if we are talking about the need to have more people in a department, it seems to me that we can find a way to quantify how long it's taking these two individuals to finish that step of the hiring process, so that we know what kind of choke point that is and how hiring additional people will help that. So is that data, I mean, is it possible to extract that step in the process to figure out how long that takes?
As you said earlier, that we can go back through to see what the process is, how long it takes to hire, the hiring process.
But I just mean those two people, because we're saying that that's a potential choke point, so can we extract just that part of it and kind of quantify how big of a choke point that is?
I can't tell you how much time it's taking that one person, or how much faster it would be with two people or three people in that department, but I can tell you that's a choke point.
Okay. Last question. So we do have international teachers that are finishing their last year, that we know will not be back next year, right?
When you say we know they won't be back, you mean that we're not offering them to return?
Well, they're finishing their last year in the country. Their visas will not be extended beyond the five years, right? So do we know how many of those are? I mean, should we be, we should be filling those positions right now, right?
Well, some of them will get visas, get extended visas, we get H-1B visas, we sponsor them into H-1Bs.
Okay, and there was a time when you would not sponsor H-1B, in part because of the contract with Faces and the other ones, so y'all are now sponsoring H-1B visas?
Mr. Lomenek, Richland One was one of the first districts to always sponsor H-1Bs.
Okay, and that allows them to say.
There are conditions that which you can sponsor an H-1B.
And is that five, is that six years?
It is.
Okay. So there's a max out date for international teachers, whether they're J-1 or H-1B?
No, let me back you up. It's a six years, three-year one time on H-1B, a three-year second cycle, then they can get a green card, so that's not, so they can keep working.
Okay. Do we know how many international teachers will have to return to their home country at the end of the school year?
If any of our international teachers are not eligible to return for whatever reason, or they're not eligible for H-1B, we've already placed them on the vacancy list and we're preparing a replacement for them.
And those are already posted positions that are open and available?
The positions aren't posted until a principal posts them, but they are vacancies that we report to the board.
And does the principal have the information they need to know about international teachers so that they know they will not be able to return the next year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's up to the principal to request that job be posted?
That is correct.
And if they don't do it, then it just doesn't happen?
Their job may not be posted, but that does not stop us from recruiting for the district.
Right, but I mean, there's nothing that's going to fill it until it gets posted, right?
That's the general process, but we will continue to recruit and try to retain teachers. So for instance, if Principal A resigns or retires and they have not posted a position, we're not going to leave that position vacant. We're going to work to fill it, but generally speaking, yes, that principal or supervisor has to post a position.
Is there any way to communicate with principals when you see, hey, wait a minute, we know this international teacher has to return to their home country, that principal hasn't posted it, can we check with that principal and say, what's going on, so that we can get that thing posted and get the process? I know that you're recruiting, but to get this process, because nothing happens in frontline until the position's posted, so that we can get applications, right?
Yes, sir. We do notify them throughout the entire process. They know if a teacher is staying, if a teacher has to return home, has lost their visa at any time for any reason, they are notified well in advance as soon as we know, unless there's an emergency situation. And also, we do recommend that they post those positions as soon as we know, and to look for a replacement for that position as soon as we know that that person cannot return.
And what happens if two weeks go by and they haven't posted it?
We're in contact with our administrators weekly, and so we make sure that we reach back out to them again if they, if there's a position that we see that hasn't been posted. But again, we recruit and continue to look for replacements in the district for any vacancies that we know are coming.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner, we have several other commissioners that have some questions. Would you mind yielding?
Oh, that's it. I've got some retention questions, but I realize we're going to talk about that later.
Great. Commissioner King.
It's hot under there.
Yeah, it is hot in here.
Yeah, it's hot in here. Maybe we can open some doors. All right, so my first question is, Dr. Witherspoon, or I guess, Dr. Long, you defer to the relevant person. So at this, how many employees does Richland One have?
Full-time, permanent, is that including part-time and so forth? That's why that number sometimes. That's why that number sometimes may vary, but approximately around 42, 4,300, somewhere in there.
Okay, but I guess you categorize them, full-time, part-time, seasonal, et cetera, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so you have that picture. What I'm trying to understand is, you know, when I joined the board in 2012, Richon One had about 25,000 students and 3,500 employees. So that was nine years ago. Today, we've lost about 3,000. We're right at 21,000 students. And we're, we've increased to 4,300 employees. And under the umbrella of fiscal responsibility, taking into account, of course, the first needs or the academic needs and the operational needs, et cetera, et cetera, I'm just trying to reconcile those numbers. We've dropped 3,000 students, yet we've increased by almost 1,000 number of employees. And I know we've talked about classroom size, et cetera, but we really haven't, we really don't have. As the number of teachers is, has remained constant or even dropped because of the recruitment difficulties that we have and that are pretty much across the board. So that's where, you know, I think it's really important that we, from an operational standpoint, that we understand where we are in terms of employees before we, I mean, I'm sympathetic. When there is a true analysis of processes and analytics and audits, true audits, in really looking at areas of needs, this has to be based on data that is solid, that can be shared. I'm really trying, I've struggled with this number for a number of years. We've filled in, we've increased, you know, social workers, we've maybe decreased class sizes. I get all of that, but still, those numbers just don't add up for me. So it would be really helpful to actually really understand where we are. One of the things that I struggle with is to really understand, I mean, where are we going in the future? Because what is, what does, what is the recruitment plan, and what is it based on?
All right, that's your question, Commissioner?
That's one of the questions that I have. What is the recruitment plan? What are the needs, and what is it based on?
Yeah, we provided a, I don't know if it was last year, maybe right before COVID. We did provide to the board a recruitment retention plan. It was before COVID, and I know that's been updated. So we can, and some of that retention and so forth, Doc Long is going to speak to this evening. But to your earlier point, you know, there have been, you know, we received grant funding for immersion and some other things. We've had some, you know, we added a family engagement piece, the family engagement specialist, additional folks that are paid for out of some federal dollars and so forth. So, you know, whenever we've done this, we've, you know, always shared with the board, you know, as rightfully so you all ask or say, so where's that, how's that being funded and so forth? And we provide that information at the time. In terms of where we're going and so forth, I think Mr. Clu, you know, very happily said it. You know, our job is to make sure that we got quality employees, certainly in every position in the district, and certainly meeting the needs of our students and programming that we want to have for them.
So we're still on recruitment, right? And then you're going to talk about retention, is that right?
Yeah, he was going to share.
So on recruitment, from an HR standpoint, how many recruitment trips does Richon One do per year? And where do we recruit?
We do several recruitment trips, but I can't tell you specifically where, if they're to colleges and universities, because I don't have her recruitment calendar here before me. But our recruiter does go on recruitment trips. And I know that we do the colleges around here, Coastal Carolina, for instance, we go. We do Clemson, we'll do South Carolina State when we get an invitation, when we know they're having an event. But it's just the name, the few. And we have recruitment events at University of South Carolina. But understand that since COVID, these colleges and universities, they've geared that back pretty good, that they'll do some events, virtual events. And any of those, we get notification on, we participate in those. College of Charleston, what have you, the colleges here in the United, I'm sorry, colleges here in South Carolina. And then those that we were successful outside of South Carolina, some of the colleges in North Carolina, we would go. But then we look at how many teachers we get from these recruitment trips, and how many we've gotten historically from these recruitment trips. And is it to our advantage to spend the money to go to a recruitment trip when we get some candidates, but then they don't sign with us? There are colleges that will host a recruitment event, and we go to the event. All the teachers are already signed to the, assigned to the district wherever the college is. And so we found that to be the case in a lot of times, that they'll go, they've already signed contracts. And I don't understand really why the college is hosting a recruitment event, other than to say that we've had one. But that our district is there and other districts around the state, and nobody gets anybody from that district, other than, for instance, Ori County, if there is a recruitment event in that coastal, what have you. So we do, she does go to recruitment events, and whenever we know that they're having them.
So, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. Are you saying that you're going to a college or university for a recruitment trip, and then when you get there, you find out that these students have already been placed?
Yes, sometimes.
How can that happen? I mean-
Some of them were student teaching in the school districts, that local school district, and so they sign contracts. Those, all the districts are looking for teachers just like we are. So they know, that's one of the things, it's a recruiting event, a recruiting strategy for us, to try to get student teachers, so that we can sign them by their student teaching. And that's one of the things we'll do.
Yeah, I understand, but of course, your time is very valuable to us. And so what mechanism, if that's happened several times, what mechanisms do you have to try to avoid those situations so that you're not wasting your time in those?
So those colleges where we know that happens, we don't attend.
Okay, so that doesn't happen anymore?
Right.
Okay.
Not those we know that it happens.
So those are for new teachers, right? I mean, fresh, all green, pretty, still shining, still very naive and all of that. What about seasoned teachers? What recruitment strategies and-
We host recruitment events ourselves. We'll do interview days, and that's for anybody. You know, brand-new teachers coming out of college or veteran teachers in other districts. We do that for enough time in advance so that if they're on the contract with another district, they won't sign their contract for the upcoming year, they can sign with us. So we do those several times a year. We do, like I said, the interview days, we do regular hard recruitment events. And again, before COVID, we had them physically. They would come in and principal groups would be there to interview, and we made selections. We go to the state expo, and they used to do that at the fairgrounds. So we'd have teams of principals and other staff to go to that. And so now, when they do it virtually, they do it virtually, and so we'll participate in that also.
Are we recruiting nationally? How do we recruit nationally?
We go to other states for college fairs.
For seasoned teachers?
Whoever's there, whoever come to the recruitment event.
Okay, is that it?
Last question, I mean, well, of this round. How many positions right now do we have open slash available?
We have 103 positions vacant.
103? And are these positioned for this year or next year, or both, or what?
They are for this year currently. And now, let me say this to you, we have 103 positions that we posted as vacant positions. Some of those are conditional releases. So we count those as vacancies, because our attempt is to fill them also. So we've got about 20 of them that are conditional releases, and so that, we're actually about 83 positions that are true vacant positions.
And how many classrooms do you know right now that are without a teacher?
I can't have a think, probably about 83.
83 classrooms without a teacher?
Right, but now, our schools have done different things to, some of the classes have been collapsed. I mean, they've assigned students to different classes. Some of them are covert, the teachers are giving up planning periods to teach classes. So not saying that all of those classrooms don't have certified teachers, students are not receiving certified instruction.
So do we have classrooms that do not have certified teachers in them?
We do, because we have substitutes in some classrooms.
Okay, and do you all know, Dr. Witherspoon, Dr. Long, how many, do you have district-level people in classrooms right now? Do you know how many do you have?
I don't, Mr. Clu, do you?
Don't have the exact total with me, but we do have the information.
Roughly?
We can send that to you.
I'd be remiss, that changes daily.
Okay, all right. I'll yield, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, what does that equate to, per school, about one and a half classes per school?
Probably, if even that much. As I said before, we're doing some different things to cover classrooms.
Okay, Commissioner Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm going to try to be real brief, because I got a couple of comments and a couple of questions myself. And the interesting thing about HR is, you can't explain it in one night, so don't even try to. When you talk about the $15, there's a process that we have to follow, where that individual has to give us permission to do the background check. It would be a waste of taxpayer dollars to just do background checks. Because once we do those background checks, that information, we're responsible for, because we've gone in someone's background. So, you know, the process that you have in doing the background checks, I think is very valid. I think frontline streamlined the process in a way, looking from the outside in, probably got a little bit more HR knowledge than any other board member here. It's streamlined in a way to help us get through the process as quickly as possible, but also to protect the district. When you went through those different tabs, I saw that. I see protection in why that person has to key us, put this there and another. And that's why I say, you can't explain HR in one night, it's impossible. But I appreciate the way that it is set up, instead of wasting $15 on, okay, Johnny wants this job, if principal's interviewing five people, that may not be the candidate. So launching a background check would be a waste of resources. As it relates to choke holes, and I'm just going to be real clear, we, sitting here and explaining the process, a mindset thinks it's nothing but keying all day long. It's not. Something can happen that stops that person from doing that, that they've got to stop and give immediate attention to. That's a choke. Might not happen every day, may not happen every week, but when it happens, it slows down the process. And what we have to grasp tonight is that hiring is a process, because you don't want to get anyone in the district that don't need to be around kids. Saw that happen in some districts. Let's talk about TB tests, not supposed to be around kids. So the process, you'd rather take your time in this process and make sure that we avoid those pitfalls that can get the district in a lot of trouble. Person that hasn't passed a TB test around kids is dangerous, we all know that. So there are things that we have to do. I don't see an issue with the frontline system. I am concerned about that external company. But what I do have concerns, and I'll say it again, is a person having the key in that information that you just showed, and I'm thinking about day-to-day responsibilities. See, the responsibility is not, as Dr. Long said, it's not just keying the information in the system. It's other things that happen throughout that day. You all do, you all are putting in the evaluation information, promotional information, terminated information, FMLA information, the medical league, military, and we can go on and on and on. Your job is not just hiring. We talk about retention, but it's some stuff got to happen before you even get to that. E-Verify is its own process, and if the candidate don't do that right, that's another chokehold. Do you see, you didn't mention that tonight, but that's a chokehold, and that's federal. We can't play with that, that somebody's social. So there are a lot of that, and that's why I say, I appreciate you all taking the time to give a general overview, but you're 50,000 feet above, you know, mindsets that don't realize what all y'all have to really do on a regular basis. Something that happened at a school, you got to go investigate. Choke, 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 okay? The other thing I want to mention is, we talk about, we talk about where we were nine, 10 years ago in students. And don't get me wrong, kids are leaving the district every day, private schools are full of them. And it's not from one particular area of town, it's across the district, it's across the state. Parents have that right with their kids in private schools, et cetera, it happens all the time. But there's a lot of moving neighborhoods and communities out of Richon One I see going on. I think we just heard of another housing, is it Lattimore Manor?
Lattimore Manor.
Lattimore Manor, how many kids we finna lose, Doc?
177.
Okay, now here's my question to you. We have 52 buildings. We have something called overhead. Overhead is what has to be in a building for it to operate. Every school got a principal, assistant principals, cafeteria workers, janitors, teachers, et cetera, that have to report to the building every day. Education costs what it costs. We can lose 3, 5, 10,000 kids. If you still got 52 schools, you still got people that's got to show up to that building to manage that building. It's a requirement. So when we talk about, you know, the numbers of kids that's leaving and families that, they're not leaving because of Richon One, I didn't close Lattimore Manor, or Gonzalez Garn, or Allen Benedict Court, what's the others? It's a lot of Saxon Homes. Somebody moving the kids. It ain't Richon One Board of Commissioners, it ain't the superintendent. So when it happens, we have to deal with it, but education costs what it costs. This board asks the superintendent, we want smaller classrooms. To have smaller classrooms require more teachers. Remember, we were adamant about that. Some of us preached that, too many kids in the class. So he did what the board asked of him. We're the only district, Dr. Witherspoon, you correct me if I'm wrong, we're the only district that offer our students 16 career pathways. I'm so glad we had Heywood tonight. Those new positions require more teachers. I hear your health program is bursting at the seams, we'd had to add additional classes. So in offering additional classes to the children, who's the end users, Dr. Long, you got to find us some more teachers, correct? That's vacancies, but the children want to take those classes. So who are we to stand in their way? We're to provide what they need to be successful. I think that's a good problem to have, that we are offering something not too many other districts can say they offer. And hear me clearly, I'm not here to toot the horn of the district tonight, because I do realize there are some things we can do better and differently in HR, as in any business. But what I am going to say is, debating how we run HR from a standpoint of looking through the window is easier said than, you can look through that window and see a person sitting there, just think they're not doing anything, and don't realize what they may be managing before them. Because HR looks easy, it's not easy. You know, it's a lot of moving parts all the time when it comes to what you all are required to do. So at the end of the day, education costs us what it costs. If the children say we want to be in aeronautics, we find them a teacher. They say they want to do fire trucks because there's shortages, we find them a teacher. They say they want to do CDL, we find them a teacher. That's what we do, and that's why we're able to say, we offer career pathways for children that when they leave us, everybody don't go to college. When they leave us, they're set up for success. That's our responsibility. That's our responsibility. Our responsibility is not to make everybody a college-ready kid. College and career. The kids that want to go right into the workforce, that want a two-year degree to go work wherever. Our responsibility is to make sure that they're contributors to society and to make sure we give them the tools that's necessary. We follow a South Carolina high school profile. And in that profile, Mr. Chair, we got a lot of kids going into the military. Lots of children. Our responsibility is to provide opportunities for our children. And in providing opportunities for the children, Commissioner Myers, we got to spend money. We got to put people in these places. Is there any, just answer this question, is there any classroom where a kid is watching themselves?
No, ma'am.
All classes are covered? Whether it's a sub, whether it's, we covered?
Yes, ma'am.
No five-year-olds are running classes?
No, ma'am.
We got the reset program. Because data showed us, I mean, if we really listen to the information, and Ms. Devine, I'm bad about this, but if we listen to the information that the superintendent and his staff provides for us, you connect the dots. We needed more social workers, they went and got them. We needed more school psychologists. We do pay them, right?
Yes, ma'am.
They ain't working candy striping. Okay. So those are new employees as well that we've added. But why did we add them? Because we needed to speak to what societal ills that our children are bringing within the building. Correct? So the question that I have tonight is, you know, as we move forward, listening to this process, how do we strengthen the process? The process is the process. We, I mean, we got to do background checks. But we got to do them the legal way. We can't background check a person just because, you know, I'm thinking about you, so let me check you out. No. They got to give us permission, right Attorney Williams? And when they give us permission, it may take a little while to get that information, but sometimes that's a good thing because you all know that background check that takes a little bit of time, it's probably gonna be something there. Y'all know I'm right. That's the importance of why we have this process in place. The process is working. Can we speed it up? Absolutely. I'm not knocking the performance of these two individuals. I think they're doing a great job to have gotten us this far. I don't see how they do it. They probably need to be on somebody's couch somewhere. That's a lot for one-on-one. That's a lot. But what I'm saying is, is that a opportunity for this district to say, everybody complaining about the hiring process, you've brought the process to us, so what do we do to make it better? Do we add individuals here? Do we, what do we do different at the front that makes the process flow smoother? Because the background check's gotta be done. Do drug screening too, correct?
Anybody that's driving a vehicle, we do a drug screen.
Yeah, that's another part. And that can take a little bit of time, especially when they got to pick that up in the middle of the pandemic. I heard that's running real slow. Because that's a specimen. So it's a lot of moving parts here, Mr. Chair, as we move forward. But at the end of the day, we've got to understand that we have to have people in these buildings with our children to supervise them, to teach them. And it costs what it costs, you know, as we continue to move forward. But thank you again for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. You know, you said something early about we're not comparable. I don't think that's the conversation tonight. I think the conversation is, are we competitive?
Yep.
You know, in making sure that we position this district to get a hold of these applicants as quick as possible, process them. And when we think about competitiveness, I think it also speaks to what Commissioner Harris has said, it costs what it costs. Now, it's no secret to people who have been exposed to the cost per pupil for each student is what, ten years behind? All right? And so with that being stated, and the removal of so many students from our district, that also removes a competitive advantage as well because the cost per pupil is not the same as years ago. To conclude what I'm saying, yet we try to be competitive. We try to make sure the salary that we're offering is attractive enough that once we do get into a footrace with another district to win the hire, that we can edge out the win for students by offering competitive salary to the cost what it costs. And so I just wanted to, you know, amplify what Commissioner Harris was saying because y'all are doing a lot while still trying to make sure this district celebrates, you know, graduation rates. We're doing less while still trying to be the best. And so with that being said, is there anyone to my right, Commissioner Harris, do you have something?
One follow-up question. With this vaccination piece, that's gonna be running through you all's shop as well, right? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Anyone else to my right? All right? Anyone else to my left on this subject matter? You got another question, Commissioner King? All right, go ahead.
So I think, I think you put it best. It's not if we're comparable, it's if we're competitive. But competitiveness comes at a cost. And competitiveness is comparing the cost-benefit analysis. We're competitive if we can recruit at the lowest cost possible and get what we want at the lowest cost. But that's competitiveness. It's not to say, or at least in my view, we may have different opinions and it's fine. You know, that's where, that's the space for discussion, right? But at the end of the day, we do not have a bottomless pit of money. We have a finite amount of money. And we have to make sure that our departments and, Dr. Witherspoon, when we recruited you, you know, we changed the budget process to a zero-based budget. That is supposed to be competitive, is doing more with less. Okay? So in having the departments always, always look at themselves and see how they can do things better with less money. That's competitiveness. So since, you know, competitiveness also looks at the real numbers. And that's where a lot of times there's a choke point between the administration, at least this board member. When I look at our competitiveness, look, in 2012, we had eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine teachers or certified, and we've only increased eleven percent. In 1920, we had two thousand fifty-seven, this is all our numbers, but in administrators, we've increased by fifty-six percent. You compare eleven percent of people who are in the classroom doing the job to administrators, fifty-six percent, that's a snag for me. That's not competitive. So I think that we just need to talk about these things and really look at the real The, part of the competitiveness, and we need to have those numbers, and that's a role of HR. HR is there to support and analyze everything that we do to make us more attractive, more competitive, more supportive, so that the schools don't have to fight all the bureaucracy. You know, I want to know the number of times that we lose someone because the process takes too long. Every competitive organization ought to have those numbers in details, I mean, in micro details. Because that's where the competitive, that's the competitive game at this point. We're really struggling. Everybody's struggling, but we're really struggling. And when I hear people say, look, I didn't take the job in Richland One because it took too long, well, I'm not saying that there aren't issues maybe in the application system on the part of the applicants, but there seems to be, that we need to have the micro reasons why people are either quitting through the application process or when we're going to talk about retention, why they're leaving the district, talk about that. They're painful discussion, but they can be painful, but we need to have them. That's it, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Oh, and one last thing. Dr. Witherspoon, Dr. Long, can we offer conditional contracts?
What do you mean by conditional contracts?
Well, we tell the applicant, you know, we've, you've checked at least all the boxes that we know, I mean, are like number one, you know, kind of deal breaker things that have worked out, but we still need to have these and offer them a conditional contract.
We do that when we do our recruitment events. But if you're talking about we're doing straight hires, what steps are you talking about we're able to skip over?
I don't know.
Okay. So we certainly can't skip the background check. We can't skip the tuberculosis test. You know, so there are things that we cannot skip that are spread out throughout the process.
And that's what I'm saying, you know, you've got, you've got, well, but you, can you not recruit somebody and say, we haven't run the background check on you yet, but we're, you're a good applicant and we think it's gonna do, but it's, you get a job under the condition that your background check comes back clean to us?
Right. And we do when we do recruitment events.
All right, so you do?
Right, we do that at recruitment events.
I'm not suggesting to skip any of the legal requirements, I'm just saying to, you know, really show our intentions and try to lock in as much as we can candidates that, you know, before anybody else.
So it's almost like a promise to them, but keep in mind, they won't go in the classroom until those things are done.
Well, you know, you're, right now, as Ms. Harris was, that was a prior question, you're essentially hiring people sometime conditionally because you're hiring them before the board has voted on them. And if the board turns them down, then it's a deal breaker, right? So it's almost a conditional.
Most, if not, at this point, all of our teachers, we do.
Right, right, right. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, let's go to the next subject matter, and I think you only have one more thing to present to us.
Yeah, Dr. Long, you're gonna speak to what we've done with recruitment, retention, and some of those areas.
Okay. Ms. King alluded to our recruitment events that we participate in annually. We, our recruitment and retention incentives, we've done a recruitment incentives plan, and we're working on that now still, trying to make some other developments. We meet with different groups through the year, different administrators groups, I meet with some of our classified people, speaking with a group about three weeks ago. And one of the things I ask them, I get HR feedback from them, and one of the things I ask is about a recruitment event. What would be a thing that can happen that would keep employees in the district or that we can recruit new employees in the district? And they gave me some good feedback on that, some work on that in, as part of our recruitment and retention plan for this upcoming year. But some of the things we do already that we offer as incentives, we do a retention, recruitment incentive for our math, science, special education, foreign language teachers of a thousand dollars. We do, we've done this past year, and some, year or two in the past, we've given a retention incentive to all employees. That was a thousand dollars to keep those people here. We do state interviews, state surveys. So those teachers who have been in the district, been faithful in the district and staying here, we do a survey, why do you stay here? And the things that they say or reasons why they stay in the district, we try to encourage our schools to continue doing those things. And one of the things I'll tell you that's a big one is support they get from schools. So principals, administrative teams continue to support our teachers so that they can stay here in the school, our school system. We offer a, we pay our instructional assistants who become student teachers. Student teaching is a big recruitment strategy for us. And we were one of the first districts in the state, as a matter of fact, to do that. Other districts were not paying student teachers. We were paying those who were fresh out of college. We were giving them a three thousand dollar stipend so they would have some money to spend while they're doing their student teaching with us. And then those who are our employees, who are instructional assistants, we pay, continue to pay their salary. Because that's actually, some years ago, we were not able to do it, the law wouldn't allow us to hire to pay student teachers. So as soon as that was lifted, Richland One started doing it. Other districts, again, other districts were not. We offer a referral, appreciation of incentive if teachers recruit or any of our employees, actually, give us a referral and we hire an employee in the district, then we give them a bonus, so to speak, for sending someone our way. We know that teachers are our best recruiters because they have friends in other districts. They help us to get teachers from other districts who are good teachers into Richland District One. And our own employees are good recruiters. They let us know some people who are out there looking for positions, want to leave where they are, they won't necessarily tell an administrator, but they'll tell their friend they want to leave. And so they tell us, and so we'll contact those people. We offer a signing bonus to our bus drivers. We are looking at doing a signing bonus for custodians because we have quite a shortage of custodians. And our student nutrition services drivers, we're doing that, you all approved, what, probably a month or so ago, an incentive for the bus drivers. And that's a few facets involved in that, that incentive plan for bus drivers. We were doing an early, our early signing bonus for our math, science, special education, and foreign language that kind of moved on into our, just giving them the bonus. So we initially said that if you sign prior to contracts, we'll give you the thousand dollars. So we said, no, you decide. Because again, as we get closer to more and more of a shortage, say, you decide, even if you sign in June, or you sign in July, we'll give you this thousand dollar bonus. We pay moving expenses for people who are coming to us out of state, up to two thousand dollars. We reimburse our new teachers for their fees that they have to take, their practices or any licensed exams, what have you, their application fee for their certificate through the State Department, we reimburse them for that. Our bus drivers who don't have any accidents, we give them an incentive, three hundred dollars.
No fault. No fault, yeah, because sometimes they're in accidents, so it's not their fault.
We have a competitive salary in our district. And some might tell you different, but we have a competitive salary. You all remember some years ago, when, it might have been two or three years ago, when the State Department said that all school systems had to pay at least thirty-five thousand dollars to their employees, well, we were already there.
That's right.
And we didn't just stop. We moved ours from thirty-nine to sixty. So we gave our teachers, had a great, you know, a big increase in pay. So our salary is pretty competitive now. We might not be able to match one district road who can pay their teachers five thousand dollars additional and their classified people, three thousand dollars additional, but our salaries are pretty competitive in this area. And we might think that there are other districts across the river who are paying better than we are, but they're not. Because I checked some. We offer opportunities for advancement in our school district. This district is this size, we have administrative positions and we have people in the district who are interested in them. Now, all those positions don't go to people in the district. We have to offer our positions and name people to those positions who would be able to qualify our people. So, but they do have opportunities for applying for those positions and being named to those That's a few of the things we're doing currently. As I said, I'll say again that we are looking at revamping our recruitment and retention plan for next year.
All right. Are there any questions to my left?
Let me add.
Okay, Commissioner, Superintendent Witherspoon?
I'm gonna add to, and board members going into committee and meeting next week, there'll be an item to, that'll speak to adding something else to that list, but we'll talk about that in committees and the board meeting moving forward. And also, as, you know, we started, our Richland One exhales, you know, given the social, emotional supports and things that are going on, there's some things that we did. But there also, we're putting a team together to look at what other incentives and things we might do for our employees and in schools. We want to map out some of those things we do and get some input from schools and certainly the board as well because that'll be an item, depending on the possible dollar amount that we'll have to bring to the board. But there are some additional things that we would like to do for, you know, for all staff, certainly our schools and departments that may, and multiple events, again, we're still mapping that out, but we'll bring something for the board consideration after the first of Again, we're still mapping that out, but we'll bring something for board consideration after the first of the, the calendar year. But we, you know, we always want to have some information and, and get information, you know, from, from our, our, our employees and folks in the district. And, and there'll be, we, Doc Long and others are, are working on some additional hiring incentives that, 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 some of those things are still being worked out. But there are some additional things and some community partnerships that we're working on that will, we hope will be, be attractive to those that, that want to relocate and, and, and work in Richland One. I don't think is, is, some of the things we're looking at, I don't want to speak prematurely, but some things we're working on, again, differently. And, and we'll, we'll be rolling some of those things out first of the calendar year as well. So what he listed is, you know, some things we have done, but as, as they've said, we, we continue to tweak. Okay, what else can we do? And, and so forth and so on. So there'll be some additional information, again, forthcoming for your consideration, you know, next week through committees and the following week with the board meeting. And then some additional items first of the calendar year as well.
Alright. Any questions to my left? Okay, Commissioner Lomennack, then Commissioner Clappiron, then Commissioner King.
Thanks. When Ms. Harris said that it's easy to look through a window and not understand what's happening, a lot of teachers smiled and nodded. And I'm wondering, can you tell me, what are teachers telling you now that will keep them in the district next year?
The biggest thing for them is support.
What kind of support?
Support from their schools, from their administration. They get support in, for instance, if they send, if they have an issue with a child, they get support. If they need resources, they have those resources available for them.
Have you gotten specifics? Do they mean social workers? Do they mean teaching assistants? Do they mean behavior interventionists? I mean, those are all different types of support to help address students who are struggling with their behavior. Have you gotten specific with them about what they need?
They didn't offer that specifically.
Okay. Is there a way to meet with principals and ask those questions? What specifically do you need? Because some schools might say, "We would love teaching assistants in grades K through four," or at least first through four. Some other schools may say, "We need two more social workers." Is there a way to find out that specific information and to see what we can do to meet those needs? And, and tell teachers that we're meeting those needs next year as they're thinking about signing their contracts?
Mr. Lomennack, we do a staffing conference every year with all the principals. And that's when they tell us, "Well, I need this, I need this, I'd like to have this. If I can move this position to get this, this is what I need for my students in the school." So we do that every year with principals.
And when does that happen?
It happens in February, March timeframe.
And if teachers are telling us that they need more support in their schools, what are we, where's the money coming from? What's the plan to provide that support? I know we got Esser money, I know there's a plan to hire 27 new social workers. That's not going to happen next year or the next three years. Are there things that you're thinking we could more wisely spend some of that money on to get immediate assistance to teachers in the classrooms in August of 2022?
I don't know, I can't tell you about the money. I don't, I don't know if that's been the problem.
Well, I mean, when teachers say they need more support, they're talking about people, right?
No, they say they stay because of the support.
Okay, if I tell you that when I talk to teachers, they say they need more support, do you think that that's not true, that they, we, they've got the support they need right now?
No, but that's not what I was talking to you about. I told you what the state survey information revealed to us as to why they stay in the school district.
So when you talk to principals right now, are they telling you they need more support for their teachers?
No.
Not, principals are not telling you they need more support?
They're not telling me that.
And teachers are not telling you they need more support?
No.
Let me, let me, support can be different. Support, if that's, "I, I would like a TA." Or, okay, if there's a, a discipline issue or something to, to that regard. And, and one of the things that we're, so support doesn't necessarily have a, 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 all of the time, may have a, a dollar amount to it or a position. For example, there's a, you know, there's a special needs class or something, there's some, there's supports that, that, that come with that. But if there's a class of, of, again, going back to small classes and, and sizes and so and so, "I'd like a TA," but, okay, there are 12 kids in class. So let's peel back, what's the issue? Is it, is it, is it a management? Is it, is it something with the, with the, a particular child? The reset or what have you? So there's, it's got to be, we do have to peel back what that's, so what is that support? And so forth. But what we do encourage and, 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 and do on a regular basis with, with, with our, our EDs of schools, principal meetings and all of that, on a continuous basis, let us know. Let us know. And, and again, have those, those discussions at, at the school level. Have those discussions with, what does that mean? What does that look like? And, and again, support sometimes is not saying yes, but let's look at the scenario. Let's look at the situation. What do we do? And, and is that listening? Is that, and then assessing, so what do we need to do about a, 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 a particular situation? But it may not, may or may not be additional staff. It may be. But let's, again, just as you've indicated, let's have that conversation. Let's, and, and, and what we strive to do and, and what we do is, you know, you can talk to us. You know, you can, you can have those discussions and so forth. We do, you know, I think we all, not I think, we, a lot of teaching and learning does it, HR does it. I teach a forum group that, that I talk to and teachers reach out to me all the time. Bus drivers reach out to me all the time and so forth and so on. We want to keep those lines of communication open so that we can continue to have that dialogue. And let's, let's talk about it. What does that look like? What needs to happen? And, and, and then we make that, make that determination. But that's, you know, again, that's, that's the lines of communication and that's, that's looking at, you know, again, what we need to do. But we got to define what, what is that support, to your point? What, what is that? And, and, and what does that look like?
Well, I agree. I mean, if there's a teacher that isn't doing a good job and can't handle the students because they're not doing a good job, then we got to address that. But I got to be honest that I'm absolutely astounded to hear someone say that teachers and principals are not saying they need more support.
Well, again, I'm not saying they, they're not, he's saying what, what was in that, that, in that state survey. What I'm saying is, what, what, what is that, what does that support look like?
But that's what I'm asking you. What are they saying? Because I'm talking to them too. And I feel like we're talking, maybe we're just talking to different teachers, different principals. But I mean, I talked to a principal the other day who got some money and put two TAs in his third grade classrooms. And he said his teachers are in heaven compared to the second grade teachers who don't have TAs. But he told those third grade teachers, "You better show me results," right? But those second grade teachers would love to have those TAs also. So that's a need.
Well, that's something we can look at. I mean, and if, if, so the principal, you know, they can do position exchanges and so forth. And that happens on a regular basis, okay? You've got an, and we, we're generous in, in our allotments to schools as, as we've talked about. And, and, and they have the, the latitude, the ability based on the, the, the number of students in, in a certain grade level. That's, you know, every year, okay, I need one more fourth grade teacher to, to move with that cohort. So there's a third grade teacher that moves. Or if there's a smaller cohort, okay, I'll take that position and create a TA, two TAs, for example. So that latitude, in, in that case, they're able to do. Just let folks know, "Hey, I want to do this, here's why." Okay. Budget's there. Or, and this happens on a regular basis, as we finish up a year and, and start going to the next school year. And this is one of the things that happens with, with, you know, enrollment and so forth. Invariably, folks will come and say, "Hey, I know, I, I, I need to lose this position or that position. Can I keep it? Why?" "Well, there's this and there's that, dah, 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 dah." You know, financially, okay, is that something we can handle? "Yeah, okay. You got the position." And, and again, those same conversations. So that latitude, if you will, that, that does exist and, and schools do exercise that.
Well, so if a principal came and said, "Can you use Esser funds to give me a TA in first through fourth grade?" What, what does that look like from y'all's perspective?
Well, it depends because we'd have to look at that. What else for the other Esser funds? Does it fit in one of those 15 categories? Is there a different fund source? So forth and, and, and so on. So if, if there's a way that that can be done, we'll take a look at it, which, again, we do.
I guess, you know, my concern is, and I'm a big proponent of social workers. I've been, I, I don't know if y'all have heard of me talking about this for the last five years, but complaining about the low number of social workers that we've had in District One for a long time. So I was happy to see the idea of getting, you know, hiring enough so that there's one per school. But my, my concern is that that's not going to happen in two or three years. We can't, there's just not a pipeline. It's not Richland One's fault. There's not a pipeline of social workers. We will not be able to find 27 good social workers in the next three years, period. Are there things that we should be rethinking about, that idea, so that we can get people who won't be able to provide that service, but will still be able to provide the other type of support? Because when I hear teachers talk about support, you know, it's TAs also, it's behavior interventionists, it's reading interventionists, and I know there was some money allocated to, to increase the number of reading interventionists. But I, we're, when I'm talking to teachers now, it's a bloodbath at the end of the school year. If we don't do something drastic and different, at the, I, I will say this time next year, if we only have 83 vacancies, I will stand up and I will clap for everybody in this administration who kept it at 83. Because I think it'll be double that unless we do something really drastic. And that's why I'm concerned that when I talk to principals, there was one principal at the middle school, 890 kids, and he said, "I could use 10 social workers and they would never sit down for two seconds." Right? So I just am concerned that if we treat this year like any other staffing year and we can't say to teachers at a school and a principal can't say to a teacher at a school, "We're all getting TAs or we're getting this, we asked for this, and you're going to get the support like you've never seen it before next year," they're out of there. They're gone. And that, we, we can't afford.
Sure. And agree, and, and what I will say is, we have those conversations. We have those discussions. We did that with, as we did our Esser plan. Esser plan required the meetings. We, we presented to principals, presented to, to the teacher forum group. And actually, we're scheduled to do, or we're scheduling right now to do an update. The, the plan calls for every six months to do an update. We're, we're trying to get that scheduled for the last week of, of this month. So to your point, there will be adjustments to that. We did, you know, we had a, a follow-up session, a meeting from when we presented the plan and, and the board gave some feedback. "Hey, can you all consider this or that?" And yes, there's, there's some tweaks that, that we are, we are looking at. So, you know, I would say, agreed. Some of the, the, the R1 Excel pieces that, that I've alluded to for the first of the year, we're, we're, but we are, as we always do, talking to principals. "Hey, we want to do some neat things for your staff." And it's not us saying we're going to do A, B, C, and D. It's, "Principal, go have a conversation with your staff. Tell us what you want to see. You want the fruit truck next mon, next, you know, and, and last Friday in February? So we can do it as an example, or you want this, that, and the other?" We got to, we got to quantify those things. And we're going to be coming to the board saying, "Hey, we, 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 we need to, we want to allocate a certain amount of funds to do these series of things that flowed from teachers to administrators to us." And, and this is where it came from. So that's coming. But making tweaks to the Esser plan, yeah, that's planned. We, we'll do a presentation virtual like we did in, in June or July. Every six months you have to do an update, so we're due for an update. But it will, it will definitely flow, those, those tweaks and changes will definitely flow from, from the feedback that we get.
When we see, you know, we talk about support as a reason that, that teachers stay, the opposite is true too. Lack of support is the reason teachers leave. If we see, for example, a middle school that is losing a really high number of teachers year after year after year and look in that same cluster and see the elementary school and the high school are not losing teachers, what do we do? How do we address that? Are we, are we, or I, I know that we're tracking teacher turnover by school because it's part of the report card, but what do we do to address that?
Again, the why. Why is this happening? And there, there are, and we, we have had serious conversation in the past with principals. Okay, we're seeing a high level of turnover. Why is that? And what's happening? We get feedback and so forth, and if need be, sometimes there changes may. You get at the why and, and, and you address it, you know, again, based on the why. And, and that's going to tell you, okay, here's, you know, what is the why? And that's going to in, inform the solution.
Are the teachers ever involved in those conversations? When there's a school like that and you go to the principal and ask him, "Why are all your teachers leaving?"
Well, they can, there can be. Most times, or sometimes, teachers are already reaching out. So that kind of drives some of the, "Okay, we hear, now you tell me," and then, and then so forth. And depending, it may be a personnel matter. And, and as you know, sometimes those things can be discussed or not. Sometimes those things may come to the board or not and so forth. But, you know, again, depending on what's, what's heard and, and what's, what's discovered as we try to get to the bottom of things. But there have been situations and circumstances and, and, and they are addressed.
Commissioner Lomennack, usually we do like three questions so everybody can get their chance. So I appreciate your line of questions.
Thanks, Chairman Bishop.
How many have you asked? I think I asked Commissioner Clappiron to go next, then Commissioner King. Anyone over here? Okay, I got Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Myers after that.
I feel like this question is from a long time ago, but you brought up the incentives that you all give for bus drivers that don't have accidents. What's the frequency of that $300, I think you said a $300 incentive for safe driving?
Right, it's 300.
Well, it's just, well, is it annually, like if they don't have an accident per year?
Yes, yes. We're, we're working on some other stuff.
Oh, one time?
Right, it's a one time.
Okay, okay. And you're working on some, some things that, to make it continuous? So they can keep not having accidents?
Right. So, so, and it is, right now it is continuing.
Okay, okay. And then, so my next question, you mentioned a $2,000 bonus for moving expenses for out of state. Is that for teachers or just staff? I mean, that's...
It's for teachers and administrators. And it's a reimbursement, because they, they might not use a full $2,000. So it's what they've spent to move, we'll reimburse them up to $2,000.
Up to $2,000, okay. So, I don't know if this makes sense or not, but if you have someone in state, is there any amount that, I mean, beyond a cer, if you're moving from Lexington to, you know, Richland County, that may be one thing, but if someone's moving from Ori or, you know, some distance where they can't commute type thing from their home, do you, is there any kind of?
Currently, there is not.
Currently, no? Okay. Okay. I just wanted to ask that.
Alright, Commissioner King.
Alright, I'm going to start with a shorter, shorter answer questions and then I have one that may be a little bit longer because it, it involves the process. So going back to the incentives, how do you track whether your, the incentives that you have work, their effect? Their effect?
Which ones specifically are you talking about?
Any of them.
Well, we look at what our, our turnover ratio is.
I'm sorry?
We look at our turnover ratio each year.
Turnover, okay, ratio? Okay, what else?
That's it, right now, that's it. And the satisfaction from, um, from employees, of those people who leave the school district, uh, why they say they've left, and they leave because of promotions or, or spouses or someone leave. And as, as Mr. Longmanak referred, some of them have some issues with support. That's why they leave the school district. But those who stay, why they say they stay in the school district.
Okay, and do you, when you, when you're actually recruiting somebody and it is that, that person is then the recipient of an incentive, there's an incentive attached to that particular position, do you ask the question to that employee whether they took, the incentive was a major factor into them taking the position versus another, going to another district?
Well, I don't ask them that, but I'll, I'll say that some of them, some of the feedback has been that, well, you all are offering this amount, this amount of money.
That some, I'm sorry, say that?
So you all are offering us a $1,000 signing bonus as to why I'm, I'm coming to you.
Okay.
So I, but I can't give you how many people said out of the number of people we've recruited to the school.
So it's more informal than it is formal? Okay, and that, that, you know, that's something that maybe needs to look at because we need to know whether those incentives are really working or not. Um, because we know that teachers, for example, uh, can never earn enough money for what they do, right? So they don't necessarily do it for the money. Um, they do it for other reasons too, so that may not work. My second question is, um, what, do, do you know what the retention ratio is currently in Richland One regarding first through third-year teachers?
I don't have that with me, but I can, um, we can get that information.
Is that something that you track?
We do track it.
You, you can or you track it?
We do track it.
Okay, okay, so you, that can be provided? Okay, that's great. And, uh, and, and especially the ones that are leaving? I know that, um, we have a, an exit interview process. Do you, uh, and, I don't know if that was part of Dr. Coleman's, the, the software that we invested in and whatever that can really drill down to, are we able to categorize and, 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 um, and turn into data the, the, the people that are leaving? The reason, the re, I'm sorry, the reason for which, particularly teachers, but you know, all employees are leaving?
Yes, our, our research office is working on that for us now.
Okay, all right. So it comes out, you put out a report, like a manual report of some sort?
Yes, they'll do a new report form for it.
Okay, my last question is a little bit longer maybe, we'll see. Um, so you talked about the recr- the, the process when we hire, uh, usually it's people from the outside to the, uh, coming to the inside. What about those, those jobs or extra duties or whatever that we have within the district, um, where we need to, well, quote unquote, fill those positions? Like, for example, um, like after-school programs or Saturday academies? Or any sort of extra work, uh, that our own employees want to do and, and their skills are matched and the principals say, you know, this is good? What, what's the, what's the process for that?
That, that is a different process, but it is a frontline process also. So it's, it's more of an abbreviated process though, but it is a frontline process. It's an internal application process. That a position has to be posted, and then employees will apply against that position so that they can, um, so that they can swipe in, so to speak, and, and get their pay done that way.
So it, it goes through frontline as well?
Yes.
And who posts, who posts it in frontline?
Whoever has the position.
So whoever, like, so the same as for an external position?
Yes.
Um, I'll, I'll, I can kind of answer that with that process.
Okay, go ahead, yeah. Good to see you.
It's nice to see you. So we post all of those internal positions because we want it to be a fair process. So if there's an after-school program that the principal doesn't always pick a certain teacher to work that after-school program, so that all of the teachers have an opportunity to, to work the program. So they post it, but they post it as an internal, uh, position. It's a very simple process to, to just post it. We just copy and paste, we have a, a simple job description. Um, and then there's the application that the teacher does is very simple. Uh, just their name and where they work. Uh, they don't have to get references, they don't have to do a telephone reference or anything like that. Also gives a teacher, if a teacher's at, uh, Lower Richland and they want to work a program at Eau Claire, they can also apply to work a program at Eau Claire if they wanted to. Um, and so they, the principal then puts the recommendation in of who they want to hire. It makes it, uh, the purpose of the process is a number of things. Again, fair, um, to all employees who might want to work the program, to make sure that we're paying them the correct wage and to make sure that it's coming out of the right budget code. So if they're working a program that's being funded, say by Title I, we want to make sure that that is the correct budget, budget code. Um, and then we push them through the system, and then they, they're hired immunit so they can swipe with their badge instead of using, you know, we used to use time sheets, and they had to write the time sheets and get them signed. Now they can use their ID badge and swipe into the program, um, as long as all of the information, the, the principal's done their part, the, the teacher's done their part, and they can just swipe in and it calculates, it tracks their time so that it's not an overpayment. Um, so that we know that if they work from four to six, then, then that's, those are the hours that they're being paid for at the correct rate.
Yeah, so we talked about FLSA, and I guess it goes back to that. Um, but so, um, so frontline has a, like a separate sort of, I mean, it's a separate, it's in frontline, but it's separate. And do you track the effectiveness of that particular system? And, and how long it takes for somebody to, you know, from, from application to hiring? And, and, and getting paid? The reason I'm asking is that, you know, a couple of people mentioned that it was, you know, it took, you know, a long time, and then sometimes, you know, it took forever for them to get paid.
So we do, uh, track it, and there are different places, again, where there are choke spots if, if the information wasn't put into the system. Once it's in the system, it really does, the process could take about three or four days. So, but we asked the principals to put it in two weeks prior to so that we make sure that the, the employees get paid. So at some point, if one part of the process wasn't done, it may take a little, it may take a little longer, but we'll follow up. And if they tell us, well, I didn't get paid, we make sure that we follow up and make sure that they get paid.
Was there a problem with the time sheets before and the, the manual process?
There is, because it has to go, people have to sign the time sheets, and then, and then you're responsible for making sure that it was prior approval, there was money in that budget, uh, for the time sheet, making sure that people aren't double paid, um, that they actually worked the hours that they wrote on the time sheet. Um, and so this, we are trying to streamline that process by using, uh, the systems that we have.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Harris.
Okay, um, I had to think about my question again. So, um, quick question, Dr. Witherspoon. Um, do we use any outside source that help with teamwork and team bonding for the schools? Individual schools?
Um, good question. One of the things that, that we've been, been talking about, especially, not just in the time we're in, but we are in the time we're in. Um, but, but Society for Human, Human Resources, SHRM, it's, and this has been out for, for a number of years, you know, people tend to leave their supervisor. Or could be the situation or what have you, having those, those conversations and discussions. But, um, one of the things that we are going to be working with are, 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 are school teams. Um, and, and we, we do some work in some other teams as well around, um, and, and we, we, we used to do some things called rounding, for example. Every 30, 60 days, new teachers or whomever, hey, how's it going? You know, how, how you doing? Because you want to, and, and I, I used to say this as a, when I was a principal, and, and now I say it to principals, who, and, and, and hopefully they do the same thing. But one of the things I say to, to, that I used to say to my teachers, hey, see me when it's here. Because if you see me when it's here, that's a different conversation. You know, you've made up your mind, okay, I'm, I'm, see me when it's here. So some of the, 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 um, training and discussions we're going to be having with, with, with school teams is, how do you do that? How do you embed some of those discussions and conversations in the work? Um, uh, those, those, as you said, those, those team building, um, elements? And, and, uh, I, I know in the past, our EDs have shared with, with, with schools, and, and we've, we've had book studies, if you will, around those types of things. And, and that climate culture piece, how do you build, and, and strong teams that, that strong climate and culture? So we address those things. We will be revisiting that. I think, you know, given the time that we're in, it's, it's, it's even more crucial, um, uh, that, that we do that. But we're in, we, we, we will be incorporating those things. Some of those, um, questions is, is, is Longmanak asked, you know, some of those things are embedded in some evaluative processes. And, and sometimes those things are, are recommended, prescribed, or even, um, up to you, you know, this has to be done in, in terms of how to work with, 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 with respective teams, or if, if there's some situations that, uh, that call for that. But that is a piece we're, we're revisiting. I know we've done some things internally with that in the past. We're going to revisit that, and we've been talking about that with, with HR. Um, uh, again, or whether that's with some outside vendors doing, helping us with that, or whether that's something we do internally. I think there's a, there's a, a micro credential, uh, that's out here, that's in, in our, um, uh, in our toolkit now. And we're going to be revisiting with, uh, you know, our schools have multi-generations of, everywhere from baby boomers to, uh, uh, Generation Z, you know, in, in their buildings. And, and one of the things, and, and this is Dr. Long's story, one of the things that, that we do hear sometimes, you know, you can, you can't talk to a Generation Z or, or millennial the way you can talk to a, a baby boomer. You know, we, I don't know about, you know, we're used to getting there and do it, hey, this is what it is. You, you, you can't approach a, some, the, the younger generation that way. So, and not that, not that, say, a, a certain thing was said a certain way to that individual, but they overheard that. And, ooh, I didn't like that. Maybe I need to rethink this. So having that conversation discussion, how do we, you know? So, um, that is something that we're, we are revisiting. Um, uh, and, and if, you know, additional, um, support is needed or outside support is needed in that, and, and we'll take a look at that. But that is something that's on our radar.
Thank you for clearing that up. And I have a second part to that question. I definitely know we do the survey online. When a teacher can express about things that need to be fixed or things they can change, and we probably do it in-house. Have we thought about using an outside company to do it as well? Face-to-face, not just online?
We can look at that, and I have no problem looking at that. But, but the, the climate and culture that, that we have to foster in the district is, we need you to, to feel comfortable, come and say something. If, 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 so I don't, we, we don't want anybody in the district to feel like, oh, I can't go talk to my supervisor. That, we don't want that. I've got to go talk to somebody else. Because, no, go talk to your, you know, and, and like I said, I've, you know, I, I don't want them to be afraid, and they shouldn't be, to come and, hey, Mr. Lieutenant, you got a minute? Can I talk to you? Yeah, can't right now, but I tell you what, you, you call off, we'll get something scheduled, what have you. But the point is, I'll have the conversation. I don't want, and, and we don't want, we don't want that. Now, if we need that additional tool, if somebody says that, that they don't feel comfortable, and then we hear, oh, I'm, I'm, I'm going to get retaliated against. And I tell folks, I said, well, give me a name of somebody who brought up an issue of concern and got retaliated against. And I don't ever get that name. But again, but nothing's off the table, don't have a problem with that. But what I do want us to, to, to certainly foster in this district is, you need to feel okay going to your su- again, we talk about these generational things and all that. Folks want to be up close and personal, they want to talk, they want to say what's on their mind, and, and we've got to be open to that, and we've got to foster that in the organization. If we need something else or, or what have you, don't have a problem with that. But the first thing I want everybody in this organization to feel like is, you, it's okay to have a differing opinion or say, can we look at this, that, and the other? And, and, and not feel bad or, or, you know, afraid to put that on the table. I want to get that across first and foremost. And, but if we need something else, don't have a problem with that. But I don't want to, I want to foster, it's okay to say something to, to somebody. And, 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 and have a conversation and, 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 and get information and, and, and share information and, and so forth and so on.
Ms. Myers, and, and in addition, although it's not an outside agency, they do have an opportunity to come in and speak with our employee relations coordinator.
That's true.
And, and some do take advantage of that.
Oh, okay, that's good to know too.
Yeah.
That's good to know. Um, and I appreciate you answering the question. I was just curious, because I know a lot of staff is willing to tell their so-called friend or family member, but not willing to speak out about it. So that's why I was curious.
Yeah, and, and I, and I understand that. Uh, and we want, and the bottom line is to, you know, hear the concern and, and address the concern. Um, um, and on the other side of that, from a HR standpoint, is, if, if I'm going to go, you know, and, and, and we're going to go and, and have a crucial conversation with somebody, I've got to be able to say, well, I heard this, that, and the other. I've got to do more than that to address the, the, the issue. You know, so, um, but, but we, you know, that can be done, done as well if, you know, they talk to one of us instead of, and it's just like, you know, when you all get calls and so forth, and I, tell them to call, tell them to call us. Because, you know, going to somebody, well, I, I heard from a third person, this, that, and the other. You know, no, I've heard from a staff member that there's this, that, and the other, and we need to address that. You know, that kind of, uh, can move things forward a little faster.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris, then Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, incentives, Dr. Long. Um, I know at one point in time, we, and I don't want to call it travel, but for, uh, individuals that were traveling a distance to teach in our di- district, we, we offered incentives. I think we don't do that anymore. Um, is that something that we can reconsider? Um, you know, when I look at Richland One, 500 square miles? It's a pretty big district.
Four, nine, eight, six or something like that.
And I know, I'll just give you a few examples. I know of teachers and principals driving from Orangeburg, driving from Sumter, and they're not like teaching in the neighboring area of Richland One, they're going across town. Um, and I, and I think someone mentioned about, I'm not talking about, I think Commissioner Claburn was saying, not Lexington, but what about those folk? I, I, I remember a teacher traveling from Orangeburg, and I would pass her on the, the road every morning. Was never late. And I know she had to be getting on the road 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning to get here because she had to go all the way across town. Why are we not offering those type of incentives anymore? I think sometimes it puts certain areas of the district at a disadvantage. And I'll, I'll use Columbia High region, just as I can use Weber, that's down on the far, far end, that when you're in the boon docks, you don't have a signal. Or gas station, per se. We all got a gas station now, but you get what I'm saying? At one point in time, we, we offered that, and that helped. Because I was watching those numbers at that time. A lot of those schools that was in the distance had zero vacancies. Um, I, I, I think it's something that, you know, we need to look at. I know we can't throw money at everything, but I do think that when we offered that, it, it, it showed folk from, because I, I remember we was pulling a lot of people from Sumter, because Sumter was... because Sumter School Board was calling and saying, why y'all stealing all our teachers? But it was working. I believe Karen O's had a billboard on the Sumter Highway and it was saying, we doing a sign-on bonus, et cetera, and we were pulling folk in. Going back to your recruitment and retention measures and everything, but, you know, I saw success in that. That, you know, any school with a vacancy is an issue for all of us, but some areas struggle to fill vacancies. And I think when we were able to provide that, that helped us. So I'm just putting that out there as something just to think about. I know individuals right now in the district that are traveling one-way, 55 minutes to get to their building. That's a lot. And gas prices are high, but, and you know, we know they're getting paid, but, you know, when you're coming that far to be in Richland One, you know, there are commuter incentives that we can provide or offer. Even if we can't do it all the time, you know, provide something there to help lessen that burden for those individuals that say, you know, I'll go over two counties just to work in Richland One. I think that says something as well. The second thing I wanted to mention, and I know to me, Commissioner Myers and Clyburn wasn't here, but several years ago, the board asked, I don't know if Dr. Witherspoon was here, I think this was when he was coming in, we did a salary review. And that salary review has gotten this district a great ways up the road. And going back to someone's point, I think it was Dr. Long, that talked about the thirty-something thousand that the state was offering, because I learned this on social media through our teachers saying, that ain't no money. Richland One been paying us more than that for years, which I think was really good that we've been able to do that. So just wanna share that. We didn't do a salary study, but we did do a salary review and that was done across the board. It wasn't just teachers and principals, but it was everybody. It was your janitorial staff, your cafeteria, your bus drivers. And that's why we've even been able to get a lot of good bus drivers in and keeping them because our goal was to make sure that our salary was competitive with other areas around us. So just wanted to share that. And then I wanted to mention, as it was stated, Mr. Chair, about the request, and I know that Dr. Witherspoon stepped out, but do we not have principal meetings, what, monthly? So they meet monthly with the superintendent and I know that they're able to share their concerns. You know, I don't talk to a certain group of teachers. I talk to teachers across the district. I talk to fairly the bulk of the principals in this district. And what I hear from them, and I'll go back to a point that was made earlier, where someone mentioned about administrative assistance and how many more we got. But that was a request of our principals because they were overburdened with handling discipline issues. Remember, they were going into the classrooms with that device. Dr. Buzard, what's that thing that they had to do? In the classrooms, they had to do all the stuff while the teacher was teaching on the computer. What was that program we used to use? Okay, there was a program. Remember when our teachers, when our principals would go from classroom to classroom to do their evals? They would log it in the system while, so, you know, one of the things that we heard, Dr. Witherspoon heard, and even in your meetings, you heard them say, you know, this is a lot trying to go from classroom to classroom doing these evals. We need someone to help with discipline. We need someone to help with this. We need someone to help with that. And that was, again, you know, we talk about how high the numbers with administrators, but that was a request, as we talk about support, that was a request from principals saying, we need more administrative assistance in these buildings to help level the burden and the responsibility of taking care of, you know, the day-to-day functions. You know, Mr. Chair, Richland One is not like how it was when we were here. You know, we could get spankings back then. We won't even talk about that. It was a different world. Now, it's different. You have to handle discipline issues totally different. And I know a lot of our principals have folk that are designated to really handle that while they focus on curriculum, et cetera. So just wanted to share that point. When we were talking about requests and so forth, we have to make sure that the requests are reasonable and that their needs are not wants. Sometimes we can get that confused, you know. You know, we may want a brand-new school, but that's not something we might need right now in the district because of the amount of money it would cost. So, you know, I think that that's something we have to continue to consider. And Dr. Witherspoon, you know, one of the things I hear from the teachers that reach out to me, don't mind emailing me, calling me, and I can name thirty schools off the top of my head right now of teachers sharing things with me, just like with the mask mandate. You know, I heard from probably more teachers than anybody saying, thank you. I feel a little bit better about coming to school that you all heard us. So, you know, with that being said, we have to continue, as you said, Dr. Witherspoon, providing those opportunities for individuals to feel safe and comfortable in coming and sharing their concerns or their needs because we wanna move all of Richland One. Not a particular area, not a particular street or a particular cluster, but all of Richland One. So we have to make sure that even that we consider equity and equality with a lot of these requests. There are schools that want tutors. Every school wants a tutor. If every school could have a tutor, we'd have tutors. But, you know, sometimes that's not accessible to all. So we have to make sure that we are being fair and consistent across the board to all schools. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Commissioner Devine.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Witherspoon, the only thing that we can really affect as a board is a strategic plan. And looking at the strategic plan, it was a strategic plan, goal number six was dealt with HR. Can you provide us an update as to where we are with those numbers? I know we're trying to get down to 12% or below. We started at 13.9% in 2017, 2018. I think for this year, we should be around 10.9%. Can you all provide that, just an update to that strategic plan for us?
Dr. Long, do you have that?
For the twenty, excuse me?
Twenty twenty-one, I think it was around 10.9, either 12% turnover rate?
I think it might have been like 16% for 2021. And this year, I think we're down to about 11%.
Okay. Can you just put that in a Friday packet for us, Dr. Witherspoon?
We can.
It's just a one-liner, just whatever it was. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but I do recall looking at the goal. And so if that's what it is, then bravo to your staff and to Dr. Witherspoon and his team for getting that number to where it is below our goal that we set that was passionately by this board in 2017, 2018. So thank you.
To this board, I'm hoping that your cooperation with this plea is that we are in two hours and 38 minutes of speaking to this item. If we don't have any other questions, I would like to move to the final agenda item. Okay, you have a question?
I'd like to add, you know, when you give the teacher turnover, please, it's not just at district level that that number needs to, it needs to be by school because we gotta know where we're vulnerable. And frankly, it'd be great to have like a trend over the past five years instead of just looking at one year. Thank you.
All right. That being said, thank you for the healthy discussion on your department, Dr. Long. Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon, to you and your staff for allowing us to go into this information session to talk about HR processes. I would like to go to item five, which is adjournment. Without no objection, we now stand adjourned. Good evening.